I had, he had an uncle.
Hmm.
It was ice skating for his eightieth birthday. Fell and hit his head. And he had a real bad headache. All right, good afternoon, everyone. It's good to see you here this evening. And we just want to say welcome and appreciate each one being here, the families of commissioners that are here this evening. So thank you each one for being here. At this time, we're going to have the Wes Caldwell, junior ROTC, who's going to come, and they're going to post our color. So if you will, please stand this evening. All right, and we'll ask at this time for our pastor, Anne Jaber, from Colliers United Methodist Church to come up. And she's going to have her invocation this evening. And that'll be followed with Commissioner Jeff Branch, who will lead us in our pledge of allegiance. So pastor?
Thank you. And Bravo for getting my name right.
Yes, ma'am.
That doesn't happen very often. So as I was thinking about what to say tonight, I was remembering back in eighth grade when I took a Bible class in school. And one of the things we had to do every week for a little pop quiz was a memory verse. And the verse that came to mind was Proverbs three five, which is trust in the Lord with all your heart and in all your ways acknowledge God, and God will direct your understanding. So with that in mind, as a memory verse possibly for this week, I invite us to pray.
Honors. Rest.
Gracious God, we come before you today to discuss important matters, to honor members of our community for their service. And we ask for your guidance and your wisdom in all that we do. You are the source of all knowledge and understanding. Therefore, we seek your direction in our decision-making process. Help us to listen attentively to one another with open hearts and minds. May we not be quick to judge or criticize, but instead seek to understand different perspectives. We pray that you will give us the discernment to make the best decisions for the greater good. In a season when people of many faiths, nations, and races celebrate the coming of the light, may we seek the transforming power that light can bring in our lives and in the lives of those we serve. May our words and actions be guided by your love and grace. In your mighty name we pray. Amen.
Everyone, face flag. Salute.
Present. Colors. Flag, leaders, to the flag of the United States of America and into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Every color ready. Up, right, face, forward, march.
All right, thank you, everyone. You be seated. Makes me feel like I'm in church. Stand up, be seated. We're offering. All right, well, again, it's good to have everyone here this evening and want to welcome you to this ceremony, as well as our meeting for the Caldwell County Board of Commissioners this December the second, two thousand twenty-four. And with that, I'll ask, do we have any amendments to our agenda this evening?
Yes, sir. We have one deletion, item five, minimum housing code enforcement statement presentation of Mr. Kurt Willis. Because of our off-meeting night, he got his date.
All right.
So we move him to January.
All right, so the deletion of item five on your agenda. If there's no other amendments, do I hear a motion we adopt this evening's agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept this evening's agenda as the county manager has presented.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that carries unanimously. And so the first item on our agenda this evening is the swearing-in of our elected officials. As many know that we've just went through an election, and we've elected three commissioners who are being sworn in this evening. And I'd like to welcome Patrick Starnes as our first person to be sworn in. That way, we can get you up here with the rest of us, Patrick. So the Honorable Wayne Rasch is coming to do the swearing-in this evening. And so we appreciate him being willing to come and do that. So it's all yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Thank you for the great honor to be able to come tonight and administer the oath of office. It certainly is a special occasion for the incoming commissioners. And again, I'm honored to have a part in that. Patrick, at this time, I invite you and your family to come up, whoever you want to bring up to the front with you.
They're in it with you.
Patrick, do you want to announce who you've got with you?
This is my son-in-law, Daniel. This is my grandson, April. This is my daughter Savannah, my daughter Lindsay, and her husband Austin.
So, so nice to have all of you with us tonight. At this time, Patrick, I'll ask you to place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Patrick Starnes.
I, Patrick Starnes.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Patrick Starnes.
I, Patrick Starnes.
Do father solemnly. Do father solemnly.
Do father solemnly.
And sincerely swear.
And sincerely swear.
That I will be faithful.
I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authorities.
Which are.
Which are.
Or may be established.
Or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
That I will endeavor.
That I will endeavor.
To support, maintain, and defend.
To support, maintain, and defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge.
To the best of my knowledge.
And ability.
And ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Patrick Starnes.
I, Patrick Starnes.
Do father swear.
Do father swear.
That I will well.
That I will well.
And truly execute.
And truly execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Caldwell County Commissioner.
Caldwell County Commissioner.
According to law.
According to law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Photo opportunity, yes.
Come right here. Take your seat. And then I would invite Commissioner elect Jeff Branch to come down and his family to join us this way.
Well, I had to bring you with you, Patrick. Well, I had to bring you with you.
It's all right.
We'd love to have you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Jeff, do you want to introduce your family?
This is my mom, Barbara Branch. Teresa Branch. This is my granddaughter, Rosie Rankin, and Henry Rankin, and then the day's ending. Little Teresa, Greeny Branch. My son-in-law, Henry, Henry, George Rankin. Definitely little Teresa.
Okay, at this time, Jeff, you place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right, and repeat after me. I, Jeff Branch.
I, Jeff Branch.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Jeff Branch.
I, Jeff Branch.
Do father solemnly.
Do father solemnly.
And sincerely swear.
And sincerely, sincerely swear.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
The state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authorities.
Which are.
Which are.
Or may be established.
Are, or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
That I will endeavor.
That I will endeavor.
To support, maintain, and defend.
To support, maintain, and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of said state.
Of said state.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge.
To the best of my knowledge.
And ability.
And ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Jeff Branch.
I, Jeff Branch.
Do father swear.
Do father swear.
That I will well.
That I will well.
And truly execute.
And truly execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
As Caldwell County Commissioner.
As Caldwell County Commissioner.
According to law.
According to law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. This'll work for me. And at this time, I would invite Commissioner elect Randy Church and his family to come up. There are? That's good. And Randy, I'm calling you to introduce your family.
Yes, sir. So this is my wife Jill, mother Louise, Christie, and her husband Doug, my son Nathan, his son Chandler, and his left, his wife Stephanie, and the other sons of thunder, Dugoe here, is Thatcher, his mother is my daughter Meredith, and her daughter is Andy, and that back there is my son-in-law, Adam, Cowalay. So I'm glad they're all here.
Good job, Randy.
It's good. It gets stressful when they're all right here trying to not forget names. Anyway, but I thank you guys so much for coming tonight as well. And this time, Randy, I'll ask you to do the same thing, place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right, and repeat after me. I, Randy Church.
I, Randy Church.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Randy Church.
I, Randy Church.
Do father solemnly.
Do father solemnly.
And sincerely swear.
And sincerely swear.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authorities.
Which are.
Which are.
Or may be established.
Or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And I will endeavor.
And I will endeavor.
To support.
To support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge.
To the best of my knowledge.
And ability.
And ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Randy Church.
I, Randy Church.
Do father swear.
Do father swear.
That I will well.
That I will well.
And truly execute.
And truly execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Caldwell County Commissioner.
Of Caldwell County Commissioner.
According to law.
According to law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, I tell you.
Wonder where we come from?
All right, so again, appreciate everybody being here for that, and it's a special time. And so I'd just like to say welcome to Patrick Starnes and his first meeting here for many meetings to follow. And so we do appreciate him and appreciate his family coming tonight. It's a special time. It's always a special time for the first swearing-in. And so it's a special time each time as it succeeds, but that first one is kind of unique. So hope, hope we done it right for you, Patrick.
I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. And with that, we'll move to our next item on the agenda, which is the organizational part of this meeting in which we elect a chair and a vice chair among the commissioners. And so I will turn the meeting over now to our county manager, Mr. Donald Duncan.
Commissioners, I'll take a motion to select a chairman for this board.
Mr. County Manager, I move that I nominate Commissioner Randy Church for chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. And I'll take a motion to select a vice chair for this board.
I'd like to nominate Patrick Starnes for vice chair.
Is there a second?
Did you have a nominee?
He's waiting for a second.
Oh.
Not seen a second. Motion fails. Is there a nomination for anyone else?
I'll nominate Commissioner Mike LaBrosse.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, moving on. I'll turn the meeting back over to our chairman.
All right, so thank you for that and appreciate the show of support in continuing as chair, even though I'm always willing to let somebody else take that helm when they want to. So, but we do appreciate it. That brings us to item three, which is an adoption for our 2025 meeting calendar. And I think that's been presented to us and has been laid out. Is there any discussion about the meeting calendar that needs to be made or brought forward? Hearing none, do I hear a motion that we adopt the meeting calendar for 2025 as has been presented?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt the 2025 meeting calendar as presented.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Next is recognition this evening of the Wes Caldwell High School Junior ROTC and their accomplishments recently. So Mr. Jimmy Harrison, our deputy manager is here, going to explain what's going on with all of this.
I'm reading glasses. Good evening, Commissioners. I come before you tonight to request the presentation of the Caldwell County Moving Mountains Award to four Wes Caldwell High School Navy JROTC cadets. They are as follows. Cadet Lieutenant, junior grade Caleb Kirby, Cadet Chief Miles Sterling, Cadet Petty Officer, First Class Aiden Kirby, and Cadet Lieutenant Caleb Kunkel. On August 23rd, 2024, these cadets represented Wes Caldwell High School and competed in the American Legion JROTC Color Guard competition in New Orleans, where they were crowned as national champions for the second year in a row. They also competed in the Open Class Color Guard competition, representing the newly-founded Sons of American Legion Squadron Twenty-Nine of Lenore, of Post Twenty-Nine, and were crowned national champions in this division as well. These cadets adhered to the Navy and Marine Corps' core values of honor, courage, and commitment, and represented themselves and Caldwell County in a manner deserving of this award. As such, I respectfully ask the board to present these cadets with the Caldwell County Moving Mountains Award. Chief Pitts, Master Chief McHalec, Commander Oxford, if there's anything that you'd like to add.
Thank you, Jimmy. I have had the opportunity over the years to see and participate in many, many, many Color Guard competitions. I have seen competitions from Europe to Australia to China to across the world. And the, these young gentlemen, the presentation they make, the presentation they made at our Veterans Day Ceremony last week equals any that I have ever seen. The Brits do a special, they have a special flair, but these gentlemen have a special, special, special place because of the willingness to sacrifice and make the practice and the preparation that they make to present the, the way they do. It's, it's an honor to me, to Caldwell County, to North Carolina, to the United States of America. These gentlemen are terrific, and we need to make sure we honor them as such. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to take a minute to recognize my predecessor at Wes Caldwell, Command Master Chief Wayne McHalec, retired, who spent all summer with these guys, working with them, helping them out. And he's responsible for getting them to New Orleans when I couldn't go because I'm by myself now. But he done, he's done magnificent with these guys. He does a lot for our community. He does a lot for the American Legion. And not only do these guys, are they awesome, this guy over here is awesome too. So just want to recognize him.
This evening's about them, is what they did. They came together as a team, and when we first started practicing, it was like, Master Chief, we're never going to get this. Well, not only did they get it, but they showed that they were better than anybody else because they competed against nine other schools from four different states, not just locally. This, this was the big time. And then when they performed as, competed as a Sons of the American Legion group, they went across, they went against a team that had won in the open competition before from Los Angeles, California, and they beat them too. And it's because of what they did. They put the time into it, they listened, and they did, they did what they knew to be right and showed that we may be from a small town in western North Carolina, but we've got good people, and here they are now. Thank you.
All right.
Yes, sir. So do I hear a motion that we award these young men the Moving Mountains Award this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we award the Moving, Moving Mountains Award to Wes Caldwell High School Junior OTC, JROTC.
All right, any other discussion or comment? I think it's been well said, well represented, but we're very proud of these young men and appreciate what they stand for and what they've done for our community. And I'm a Wes Caldwell alumni, so I'm very proud that they're from Wes Caldwell. And so with that, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. So we're going to come down and present them now. Ribbons on the sons of the stash. So who do I give this to?
One to Chief Pitts and one to Commander Oxford. One's for the Legion, one's for the high school.
All right.
Thank you, Randy.
For these young men.
Randy, always good to see you.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all.
Good seeing you.
Yes, sir. Caleb, I don't know if you can hold this and that flag too, but I certainly appreciate you. And congratulations. Mr. Kirby, he's yours too. Thank you. Glad you got a name tag. So, I don't know if y'all want to open those up and make some photos. We can stand behind. We can stand behind that wheel, too. That work for you? All right. Next on our agenda is a budget review. Next on our agenda is a budget revision, and this is dealing with pump stations and the project ordinance for those. So, Mr. Donald Duncan.
Yes, sir. Heather Cox wanted to be here tonight, but the illness has got her voice, so she couldn't speak even if she was here. So, I'm taking over tonight, and I'll try to remember this. I believe my presentation is live. Oh, sorry. That's later. Thank you, Eric. All right. So, one of the things that we've been looking for is grants and low interest financing that we can use to improve our water system. There's been a couple opportunities for grants to come up, but we didn't have projects ready to go, what I like to call shelf projects, where they're through design and they're ready to go to final permitting at any time you have money that comes down from the federal state government. There is a new round of what's called rural infrastructure grant money that's coming, commonly referred to as BRIC, B-R-I-C. We don't have a project for that, and they extended the deadline due to the Hurricane Helene event. So, this is a project that staff came up with and said it's something that's very needed for not only employee safety, but for water quality as well. The plan is to design and evaluate and create new housing for our pump stations. Most of these pump stations are very small, confined quarters. It's a confined space hazard. Also, the components are very old. They need to be rebuilt. They also need to be put in an area where we can get maintenance trucks to them and move components in and out easily and ensure safer drinking water. There are five scattered around the county. Here, you have Little John Church Road, Shealy Road, Alfred Hartley Road, Draco Tank Road, the small pump house there, and up on Eagle Heights. And some of these pumps have not been, had anything, any upgrades since they were initially installed. Some are more than fifty, sixty years old now. The Little John Pump Station here, as you can see, you have to drop into a concrete box, and there's not even room for a person to stand once you get off the ladder. You have to balance yourself on the housing to work on it. It's a safety issue that we have. Here's another one at Shealy Road Pump Station, same situation. You can get one foot on the ground in this one. This is the Alfred Hartley Pump House. You can go in and turn around and go out. That's all the room that's in there. It's a bare minimum for this one, and there needs to be a lot of maintenance done on this one and increased as well to maintain pressures in the county. Draco Pump Station is one of our newest, and it's just a prefab unit. You can access everything from standing outside, but it's prone to freezing. It needs insulation, so a better facility here would be important. And here's the Eagle Heights Pump Station, probably our most dangerous one. You cannot stand up in there, so you have to work doubled over in order to extract these very large pumps on that one because the elevation change. So, we've solicited Clayton Engineering to do a study on this, do a field survey, do civil site design, architectural, electrical, and permitting, and we'd like to have these as five projects. Once we get to a point of design, we would get construction estimates on them and try to apply for grants. And even if we don't get grants, I suggest that the council every year, budget year, try to do one or two of these every year to upgrade, whether we get the grants or not. And that's, that's it.
All right. So, I guess in preliminary comments of that, I know our pump stations are in need of some maintenance and general maintenance. As the manager said, we've got some that's been fifty years plus, hadn't been a whole lot done to them, which makes us good stewards of everything, as well as our maintenance and support staff there, especially Barry Callaway. I'll just call his name out. I think he's worked on them for that fifty years and he's still with us. But it is, I think, something that's needed. So, do I hear a motion this evening that we adopt this budget resolution and ordinance?
I'd like to say something if I could.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the, the Clayton, is this the same people that's working on the project in Salmons?
They're, yes, one of the engineers at the county.
Are they, have they got us any drawings back on it yet?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we're actually in procurement right now for parts, and, and should be going out to bid for the actual equipment for that.
Okay.
Yeah, we've been waiting on Appalachian Regional Commission for almost two years on the funding. The design and engineering was done over a year and a half ago.
Okay. Go ahead, Randy. I'm sorry.
Okay, that's okay. You, you got all the rights to question anything you want, Patrick. So, yes, sir. Anybody else have a question or I'll entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion.
All right. So, Patrick's made a motion. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. And so, thank you for that. And then next is a resolution. This is in a conveyance of surplus property to the Patterson Fire and Rescue Department. And again, Mr. Donald Duncan.
Yes, sir. We have tradition of being able to allow our nonprofit partners and subsidiary corporations to use county equipment. There's been a request from fire departments over the last three years to have equipment. This is a request from Patterson Fire Department to utilize a 2015 Ford F-15. And the resolution there before you would allow it to be contributed to the fire.
All right. So, hearing the recommendation, what's the pleasure of the board in adopting this resolution?
Mr. Chairman, go ahead.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we do that.
All right. Any other discussion or comment?
If I'm right on this, like if they decide to sell it or something, they have to offer it back to us.
Yes, sir. Yeah, or if they do sell it.
If they sell it, we, they have to pay us. I just want to make it clear to everybody out here. We just, you know, everybody should know that.
Yes, sir. First right of refusal, as they say.
Yeah.
All right. Well, with that, I'll call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries as well. And that brings us to our consent agenda this evening. And again, Mr. Donald Duncan.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the item number eight is the acknowledgement of the revue of bonds. The bonds have to be presented to you annually that we have had them as just part of the general statute. Registered deeds is an amount of $50,000. The finance director has to be bonded for the amount of $1 million. Our sheriff has to be bonded for the amount of $25,000. Myself as county manager, $50,000, and the tax administrator, $50,000 as well, per state statute. The ARC grant we just referred to with the Western Belmont Council Government and Evergreen Industrial Park, we got release of funds in the amount of $513,000. And then to administer that grant, to make sure everything's done and we bulletproof the grant, so to speak, the COG also does our grant administration for us, and that contract amount is $25,671, I believe. Also, a budget revision for the 911 Communication Center project. Very pleased to announce that received in excess of $2.6 million. This goes to purchase equipment for the future comp center. This will be consoles, furniture, basically everything to start with. This would be the first of a couple of grants. This is one to get you started as you go through construction to get everything ordered. And then as we scale up, we can apply for additional funding in the future. We'd like to apply for another 1.8 to 2.3 million, depending on pricing at that time. Budget revisions, Duke Energy Foundation has gifted us $25,000 of, this would be high angle rescue equipment. The reasoning behind this came as the grant opened up just after we had our second drowning of the year in Wilson Creek area. We were borrowing equipment from other communities, as well as the Lincoln County Sheriff's Department had a high angle rescue team. They brought up and helped us with the search. Our Sheriff's Department emergency management team said, hey, we need, we need additional equipment. And so, luckily we'll be able to get that, and it will be for use through the entire county, the amount of $25,000. Resolution, number tw- item twelve there, that is a resolution supporting the repair of the Blue Ridge Parkway. Senator Deanna Ballard reached out to most of you. Mile marker 282, I think it's around 300 and something now. It's still closed. The estimated damage from Hurricane Helene in the state, non-federal damage, is $53 billion. The Parkway, in addition to that, is estimated between $7 and $10 billion, just on that one piece of infrastructure. That's the most highly visited part of North Carolina, believe it or not, more than even our coast, and is a major economic driver for the counties in the western part of the state. And so, she's gathering support to our elected officials in, in Congress and Senate to try to get more money and funding to replace that, that asset. Budget revision for the sheriff's office to purchase the robot. Yeah, we already have this robot purchased, an amount of $24,000 in the current budget. This is to use our asset seizure funds from the sheriff's office to purchase a component of that that delivers the OC spray. So, we can send it in. If there's a, someone holding someone hostage, we can gas the room without our folks having to get in close proximity and putting themselves at risk. Be a nice addition for that, that piece of equipment. Our older robot, as you remember from last year, the control board went out, and it costs more to replace that control board than it does the robot. Sheriff's Office acceptance of the Gary Soneys Foundation, they paid Honda of North Carolina for two four-wheelers that we've been able to use in the recovery efforts for Hurricane Helene. Also, we have, are applying for a new sheriff's office approval submission of the National Police Dog Grant, amount of $5,000. You can see the dog that's retiring here. She just helped us make one of the largest drug busts in Caldwell County history. The sheriff's here if you have any questions, but that goes to show you, that's a small return, or a large return on a small amount of investment there. As for discussion is sheriff's office accepting of the Linco Bearcat Award. This was $1,000 donated by the Linco Corporation, who built our armored personnel carrier, and it was used to purchase chainsaw, medical litters, dynamic rope, portable lights, first aid kits, and borrow and fuel for, to be used with the sheriff's office. We already have those items in house. All you're doing is accepting that, that award of that grant. Sheriff's Office acceptance of the North County Community Foundation Grant. This is for the Kids and Cops Grant, an amount of $2,500. Item eighteen is replacement of a damaged patrol car. The car was set to be repaired, and they realized there was more damage underneath, and so it was ultimately totaled. We were, got replacement value of $15,958, and then we're gonna add $52,000 from fund balance to replace that car. We already have a quote this year from OC Welch Ford of Summerfield, and they will honor that price, even though it's about four months on, five months on since that last quote. So, we're very happy with that. Uh, this is a snowplow for the truck that we purchased back in the spring that we purchased used. We found a good deal from a local dealer, an amount of $8,965 to add to our fleet of plows. Health Department Agreement Addendum for, this is for child fatality. We're receiving $1,390. This is for a multidisciplinary team to be paid to review any infant death cases in the county. Hurricane Helene Documentation Coordinator, this is something that I think we're gonna desperately need. As you know, the recovery funds are significantly more than the disaster funds. So, as we get through more hazard mitigation money, county will be eligible to apply for millions of dollars. What we'd like to do is add a seasonal staff person to help us with that financial documentation. So, it's essentially an internal auditor to help us make sure that we submit everything. This will be 100% reimbursable by FEMA. And we have someone selected that we think would do a really, really good job, a former finance person coming out of retirement to assist us.
So, is this gonna be a full-time employee for us, or is this gonna be a part-time employee? Or is this gonna be a contract person? How's this gonna work?
Good question. That will be a full-time employee, but that'll be for a term of eighteen months or whenever we need to end it. So, if it, if we're able to get all of our money applied for and reimbursed in a shorter time than, than it ends sooner than that. So, we call it a seasonal hire. We just, just related to the disaster to keep us on track and make sure we're turning everything in. Basically, somebody hurt all the cats while we're doing our regular job.
And this person that y'all got chosen is aware that it's a potentially a short-term?
Yes, yes, sir.
Twelve, eighteen months?
Could be. I think we're probably looking at eighteen months to two years, but I don't want to say more. It just depends on how fast the money's reimbursed, how much documentation, and honestly, how much Congress appropriates for hazard mitigation money. Because once we get into hazard mitigation, that, that could take quite some time.
What's to pay for this person?
Uh, it's about $25 to $30 an hour is the range.
Is he working forty hours a week?
She. And she'll be working as much as necessary, yes.
But it's 100% reimbursed by FEMA?
Yes.
Local dollars being spent.
That's true. And it's to protect y'all, to make sure that we get as much as we can out of it.
Yeah. Well, I know that stuff can get tricky too, the documentation of all of it.
Correct. Yeah, you could get turned down for quite a bit, and there's a whole appeals process, and some appeals take years. So, you want to make sure you've got everything documented, and you have to keep records for, I believe it's ten years after an event closes. So, if you remember Hurricane Hugo, it took, I think it was thirteen years to close out Hugo for most communities. So, you have to make sure everything's there and ready to go and accessible. So, you essentially maintain the documentation for, in that case, twenty-three years. Training module for Cages Mountain EMS base. This is one of the assets that we wanted to add to the base to allow us to put in a life-size full ambulance box so we can train our people and upgrade. This will be an actual working ambulance EMS box. It'll be a used box that we purchase and get it refurbished and updated, and we'll go in the building to, in order to train paramedics with. Most of these, if you'll find, there's grants for 250 or even half a million dollars. If you can get one, typically go into a community college. So, I think this is a bargain, and Fraser has been very helpful on the pricing to try to get us one. And they've maintained their quote from earlier this year. And this is using funds that are from a leftover project from the mental health construction.
And this is just for training purposes only? This is not gonna be on the everyday used truck for an ambulance?
Correct. No, it would be setting in the bait and be able to use and train people with without having to, to take an ambulance out of service. But in an emergency, it is a fully functional box. So, if we had to mount it, we could actually get it remounted as a box.
Didn't we just have a ambulance crash or something? Couldn't we use the box off here?
That box is being remounted on a service truck. So, it's going back into service. Good question.
Originally, well, originally it was said that Fraser was gonna donate this box to us. What happened to that?
We asked. They're, they're too busy. They've got too many, too many orders. But that was asked about, yes, sir. We had hoped to do that.
Is this something we need right now, or should we hold off on this till we get the building built? I mean, the building's not even close.
Correct. You have to have it ordered and ready to go into building when it's ready. So, it'll take several months before that'll arrive. Just like construction of any box, refurbishment of any box, it's taken almost a year now. Good question.
Is the, is the building built around the box? I mean, can you take the box out?
You can, yes. It's designed to be able to slide in and out.
It'd be like a garage door bay type, where you can pull it in and out?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
What's the estimated time on the building being finished?
I believe, if I remember right, I've slept since then, and we've had this hurricane. I'm thinking we're gonna be in, in August of 25, if I remember right.
I'll ask too, while we're on that subject, but the community college, at one point, we were talking about this being a training, dual training facility and, and the community college helping, or using that facility, maybe helping offset some of this cost. But in the meantime, are they building something of their own now for EMS?
Not for EMS, no. It's for health sciences only. We did ask that question. There's no improvement.
They're building an emergency room.
Yeah.
So, they'll have a, an emergency room.
Nothing dealing with paramedics. So, we may need to ask them if they can help fund a little bit of this.
We can ask.
Dr. Porch is always asking us for money. I think we should go ask him for a little.
They gonna use it, for sure.
Yeah.
Is the college gonna use it?
I think it would be their instructors coming over and doing con ed, things like that, and creating a facility that's more real-world environment where you come out of the back of the ambulance. If you remember from the presentations, you would go into a simulated ER, or you would go and say, like a home that's very cluttered and crowded, just like we're picking up a patient on a normal day, or we're going to a pediatric call, or we're going to an osteo call. You create all those simulated environments, and it's just continuation of that.
Man, are not, all our ambulance is so busy all the time, that we can't just train in one of our ambulances in there?
We do, but this is for, you know, con ed. So, you're not taking one out of service and taking all the equipment off. We have simulated, you know, equipment on there. We wouldn't be using live drugs, things like that.
So, this is in-service type training?
Correct. For, for a lot of folks, but also, also be for rookie school as well.
Well, who, who exactly are we training? Because my understanding is we can't get paramedics now.
I think we're only down to two. So, we're doing pretty well. Any questions else on that item?
I just don't know if I'm ready for that yet.
I think the design, I think the architect design was planning for that, right?
Correct, yeah. And it's not coming out of your, your existing budget. These are funds left over from a prior project.
And how much do you say it's gonna cost?
With all the unit itself, let me pull up the quote here. I believe it's 87,000. Trevor may remember better than I do.
Trevor out there? Yeah, Trevor, there you are. Couldn't see you. You remember the cost on that?
The box itself is around twenty-five thousand, and then you've gotta re-do the bodywork, and, cause it's an old red and white box, so there's bodywork, and construction of a steel frame that comes up, um, and then the interior refurb, I wanna say the total amount was right at, um, seventy-five thousand.
Plus a contingency.
There's contingencies in there as well.
Final numbers, eighty-seven, nine fifty. Well, your total line item for furniture, design fees, construction, legal fees, anything that we need to do on that project for final obligation is one thirty-two, nine ninety-eight, but you won't spend all that.
Hey, Trevor, I hate to put you on the spot, come up here and talk to us for a second.
That's reason easier, put him on the spot.
Talk to us about the plans around this training stuff, with the community college having the program and...
So the plans for this would be to train not only new incoming EMTs that's starting fresh off the street, um, there's plans for, to start getting high school programs, and high school students starting an EMT using this facility, um, our local fire departments to come in to practice with lifting, using the stretcher, being in the back of the ambulance, with future goals of having our own internal paramedic program that we can hire straight from this high school program, or any other, say, part-time EMTs that come in, and having our own in conjunction with the community college, in order to train and have realistic scenarios, because you have, um, we already had a, um, a lot of equipment donated from Blue Ridge Healthcare, that is going to, there'll be a simulated emergency room setting, as the county manager said, along with the, um, other, you know, living room, so, when we go back and forth, this module allow us to have, um, video, recorded videos, and we can critique the, not only new paramedics and EMTs, but also staff that are currently providing care in the county.
I think the biggest thing for me that we need to try to figure out, I, I'm all for training these people, we need to figure out how we're gonna keep these people after we train them, that's the biggest problem I see in fire departments, EMS and everything, we, if we're gonna put forth our efforts and spend our time and our money, I mean, they need to be some kind of dedication, or some program set in place that we can retain these people.
Yes, and I think this part of having this ability to train and have this technology here will greatly increase our recruitment and our retention, uh, like I said, we've had, we've got two vacancies currently, um, in June we had twelve, and we've had zero, um, folks leave since May or June, so, that's the plan on this, is to keep it going, and the momentum going forward to have this type of infrastructure to recruit, whether it's the high school classes that we start, that we're in the planning stages with, community college, and turn this into, if we have, and I, I would hope the problem would be that we don't have to train new paramedics so much, to have so many vacancies and so much turnover, and, and that's, right now, becoming a whole lot better for us, for sure.
I don't know, I just think some, I mean, it's okay, but something, they need to be some coordination between here and the college, because when you said, and Donald and you too, about picking up stretchers and stuff, Mike, you was in that meeting that I was in, and basically, that's, that's, that's part of it, because you're taking a stretcher out of an ambulance into emergency room setting, so I think we need to have a little coordination with them, and see exactly what they're doing, or what they ain't gonna do there, not that I'm opposed to doing, to training them, but I reckon instead of two people doing the training, we, we need to figure out what each others are doing, I reckon it's the way.
So we ain't duplicating it?
Yeah.
Have we talked to the college about what they're doing versus what we're gonna be doing?
So with the college, they, their main objective is getting the, the didactic, or the, the bookwork done, as in hands-on and doing the work that, that goes into the field when, when someone gets hired or goes to the fire department, with that, there's, there's very little time in the initial classes for that type of training.
Yeah, I would say these is complementary programs, from what I've, the presentations, obviously from the community college, they're just more acute-focused, once you arrive at the hospital, ours will be pre-hospital care.
I do know that in the past, we've had, we've had some challenges with people coming out of paramedic school, you know, not knowing how to drive a truck, not knowing how to work stretcher, um, those type of things are, have been noted in the past.
Very much so.
Because they do focus more on the, I guess, the, uh, the medical side, and, um, than they do the actual on-the-job, hands-on, touchy-feely stuff, I don't, I don't know if they even, does much of that even happen, really, one time it wasn't, because they didn't have a driver's course at one time.
Now the driving course is required.
Yeah.
In the EMT class, so.
Correct.
And we do it annually as well.
Yeah, they were coming out of EMT, paramedic school, couldn't, couldn't drive a truck.
I mean, I think what you're doing's a good thing, I, I really do, but I, I would still like to see a plan on how we're gonna retain what we're training, whether it works or not, I'd, I'd like to see a plan in place, to try to, to try to do that.
But to me, getting back to this truck, this box truck, I mean, why don't we just buy a whole, I mean, you're talking about buying a box, painting it, doing all this stuff, buy fifteen thousand dollar ambulance off gov deals, pull it in there, train in it, and when you don't need it, pull it out, or, or maybe have a driving program, let them learn to drive this old ambulance or something, but, I mean, I don't know why we can't just pull one in and out, instead of, I mean, spending a hundred, you said what, a hundred and thirty-two, it could go up to?
That's for additional stuff for the classroom, but yes, the, the box is, after refurb, and the frame is built, and the electronics is eighty-seven.
And just for, just to train in, I don't think it makes sense just to buy a hundred and thirty-two.
If you buy one that's dedicated, they start at about two fifty, so this is a, a pretty good bargain.
Just buy it, oh, and off gov deals, I mean, they got boxes and everything off of them, I mean, you buy one for nearly nothing.
Well, this box.
We got that big Griffins, he's got a dozen of them sitting up on the hill around there.
Yeah.
Will, uh, will this box be set up like the other trucks?
It'll be identical to our, our current fleet.
Yeah.
That we've got, that'll be, you know, the same, everything in the back.
That helps, because they're trained on a specific, they know where everything is located in a box.
Is there a time somebody come from another place, I mean, maybe?
I'll just add that, uh, several years ago, we made a concerted effort to buy Frasier.
We did.
Uh, in which, this is where this box is coming from, so in like manner, and, and all of the particulars inside the box is gonna emulate exactly what we've got in service, which is good for us, the second part of all that is the continuing ed portion that our paramedics have to have, and with this box being inside, it, it will allow that opportunity, uh, I think when it's bad weather, and raining, snow, and whatever it is, I'm looking at this a little bit like, uh, the, uh, power, uh, lineman program at the community college, where they put the poles inside, and they can go inside and do the training in there, in whatever weather it is, so, uh, it'll be beneficial for our paramedics to be able to have that opportunity, and be inside, and, and be able to train out of the elements, uh, when they need to be able to do that, and we're trying to wedge that in, in continuing ed while they're on duty, instead of bringing them back in when they're off duty, and having to compensate them through overtime, so it's kinda all working together, and, and, and I understand it, just wanna make that comment, that, uh, I believe it'll be beneficial for us, uh, it is a lot of money, and if we can squeeze somebody else out of some, I'd certainly all for that, too, so if community college comes over there and wants to use it, uh, we, we need to set up some sort of fee program, but we go over there sometimes, we have to pay fees for stuff, and so, uh, we, we may need to look at that coming back, so, or any of the outside counties and agencies that wanna come and use that.
Yeah, I think the closest one that, that's done this is, um, Cherokee Tribal, they've, they've got the same concept, that they come out, that did, um, same, same project.
I, I'm not opposed to this, but to, um, Commissioner Starnes' point, I like to make sure we're not duplicating the training, and that, I know, sometimes in government, we have a tendency to, we have great ideas, wonderful things, and it all looks good up front, but over time, it starts to dwindle down, and, so I wanna see, if we're gonna have a training facility there, I wanna see it being used, whether it be from our staff, or community college, or to Chairman Church's point, outside agencies, or whoever, I just wanna make sure that we're actually using what we say we, what we have there, and getting the benefit from it, so.
Yeah, we, we don't want you to come back and, and have to pay to send somebody off for training, right?
That's right.
When we can do it at the house.
Yep.
So, we'll be wa, we'll be watching, how's that?
That'll work.
The next item is the appointment of Ms. Ashley Young as the plant review officer for the town of Rhode Island, uh, as you know, we require each community to send us, uh, their own approved plant review officer, we no longer do plant reviews for them, to make sure that all their zoning ordinances are conformed to, appointment of Judge Andrea Plouler to the JCPC Committee, and amendments from November twenty.
All right, so that brings us to the end of the consent agenda, do I have, uh, any comments about that, and/or a motion that we adopt this evening's consent agenda?
I'm, I'm about to throw everything with that module, I'm against it, on the consent agenda, I just think we can buy used ambulance and pull in there and do just as much with it for nothing compared to what we're gonna spend.
All right, so that's noted, uh, from Commissioner Branch.
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept this evening's consent agenda, as the county manager's presented.
All right, so I'll call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed to one for it.
Yes, sir. All right, so hearing that, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn this evening.
So do.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And again, thank you everyone for being here, we are adjourned.